There we go. Now, thank you all for being here on what has been a hot but beautiful day. And it has been a busy summer for all of us, I am sure. Certainly know it has been for me, so we appreciate you joining us this evening. I'd like to begin by asking that everyone who is able, please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of British States, the Constitution under God, founded with liberty and justice for all.
Since I skipped approving the agenda, I would ask that we can proceed to that now. Do I hear a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
I move we approve the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Cross. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approval of tonight's agenda as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It sounded like a five-oh to me. At this time, I would ask that all of you join me in a moment of silence before we begin our public meeting. Thank you. Next, we will move into public comments. And there will be a timer on the screen. And as is the normal procedure, I will gavel once at thirty seconds. That way, you don't have to be so attuned to the clock. And then we'll gavel twice at the end of the three minutes. We ask that your comments be directed to the entire board. And I will begin with Zach Nicholson.
... posted on his government page about his request being denied to meet with legal counsel of the name change policy. Someone who will remain anonymous, which I can only assume was Mr. Folks' little birdie, posted that if Cross was concerned with the meeting, then he should have attended, and instead was chaperoning a youth group, to which I replied that members missed meetings for various reasons, rather illness, emergency, or vacation. And that would be like me criticizing Schike while he was away when his mother was sick. Now granted, that is not the same as say, chaperoning a group, but rather a vague generalization that yes, members do miss meetings. I do not feel my comments were disrespectful to Schike. I would not fault a man for spending time with family or grieving with family. So around ten PM, July twenty-fifth, Mr. Folk reached out to me via Facebook Messenger. I told Mr. Folk that unless he was willing to give his source, or at least tell me what was said between him and his birdie, this conversation shouldn't proceed. I can't not defend myself if I don't know what was said. I then requested Folk to call me. We exchanged numbers, but he was too tired to talk, which I find ironic since he decided that around ten PM is a great time to strike this conversation. I told him I expect his call about as much as I expect the fake feedback he promised on the Sherman Alexie novel that was, excuse me, in question, where he and his wife were to review and give me feedback. That was March twenty-ninth, and I'm still waiting for that feedback. That's when Mr. Folk used profanity in calling me an AH. Use your imagination. This is not appropriate behavior for a school board member. I do not appreciate being harassed at ten PM. So days later, I emailed Vice Chair Lohr and Chair Breeden. Lohr responded with not only a condescending tone, but would not comment if Folk's behavior was inappropriate or not, despite my repeated attempts. Boy, my email, guys, it's all there. They condoned these actions by Folk, and Breeden never responded. During the last two years, I have debated policy and actions by this board where I was called hostile. And not once have I threatened or used profanity in our conversations, emails, or texts. Advocating for my children is a fundamental protected right. Learned a distinction. I gave this board and Mr. Folk ample time to issue an apology, to which I received none. So again, I'll ask, Mr. Folk, I would like you to issue an apology here tonight. If you cannot do so, then perhaps it's time to resign. If you have to curse a parent when addressing and conversing about school business, then that is a clear sign of weak leadership. Imagine if Cross had said this to someone like Ashley Saunders or Patrick Fritz. You guys will be all over it. And it shouldn't matter the party affiliation of who said it, but rather it was even said at all. In closing off my comments on SROs and the name change policy. We need SROs in every school. Otherwise, how would this board, county supervisors, and sheriff sleep knowing they have to pick which students and staff to protect and which ones we don't? It's also wrong to assume that all parents are some kind of trans boogeyman. If the assumption is that I'll be abusive for being notified, then don't notify me of bad grades or skipping class. I'm not transphobic just because.
All right, well, floor's yours, guys. Thank you. Marvin Weaver.
My name is Marvin Weaver. Thanks for this opportunity. I am here for one reason, and really one reason only, and that's for the benefit of our children. And in my case, grandchildren, because I do have grandchildren in the public school system. Let me just start out by saying I'm a hundred percent behind Matt Cross's proposal as far as parental rights, because that is fundamental to me. The children belong to the parents, and we should never usurp parents' authority. Okay? The issues that you as a school board decide are going to have a profound effect going forward for our children, because they're life-changing. And they should really be debated with all sides involved. Because I have watched this issue. And of course, you know what I'm talking about, probably the whole gay agenda, the transgender, all of that. I have watched and I have observed people that are involved in that and that have accepted that lifestyle, and I don't like what I see. I sat here last school board meeting and listened to a lady give statistics on some of the things that these children are exhibiting as far as dysphoric behavior. And they were not good, yet she was for the, she was for all of the transgender things. The percentages of things like suicide, they're thinking about suicide. And I'm thinking, can we not connect the dots? Can we not connect the dots? I'll leave it at that. The other thing that I'm really concerned about is I'm going to relate to you a situation that was related to me by a friend. I did not research this. I took him at his word, because he knows these people. They have a daughter that is in high school, at one of the local high schools. She went to her bathroom to use the bathroom, and in comes a boy. And she says, what are you doing in here? You can't be in here. He goes, oh, yes, I can. Well, she just left, thank you. She just left, didn't use the bathroom, didn't use it till she went, till she got home, because she was mortified. Here's what I'm saying. Please think this through, because once it's in place, it's going to be hard to get it out. Thank you.
Next is Mike Stempel.
Thank, yeah, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all. Yeah, I'm a hundred percent against the name change policy. I don't think it's necessary. I don't think it's, it's something that was, a problem was created out of nothing. There was no issue. And as far as the, there was some mention of statistics. Those statistics that the gentleman mentioned, or the young lady mentioned in the previous meeting were about unsupportive families. People LGBTQ folks who are in unsupportive families experience more suicide and things like that. That's, that's why they experience it. I'd like to talk a little bit about the nature of God and who God is, according to my understanding. I believe that Jesus is the greatest, as far as the character of God, he is our best representation. And I just think about him, I know many, many people on this ish, on, I don't call it an issue, because these are people's lives, but people think about these things. They use God as their, their guide. And I would like us to think about the nature of God and things that God said in his, in the Bible, in his word, and about how we, God, interacted with. So you think about the Pharisees. You would think, well, so the Pharisees, if you were a Pharisee, you memorize like this much of the Bible. Like, you know, the Old Testament, the minor prophets, the major prophets. You knew all that stuff, right? So you'd think, well, these guys would be the righteous ones. These are the guys who'd be God hanging out with. No, in his inner circle, Jesus hung out with a prostitute who washed his feet with her hair and perfume, right? That was his inner circle, not the Pharisees who knew this whole thing, like the whole, almost the whole thing. I think about verses such as James, chapter two, verse nineteen, because a lot of people will say, well, we're just trying to, you know, knowing God means we're trying to get people to believe in God. It says, well, even the demons believe and tremble, you know, in God. So obviously, that's not the mark. There's a, there's a, there's a better mark of who God is and the nature of God. So I think of the prophets. I think of Hosea, chapter six, verse six. For I desire mercy, not sacrifice, and acknowledgement of God rather than burnt offerings. Basically, God's saying, I don't care about how you can do all your religious festivals. You can do all your pious religious behavior. I don't care. I want mercy, not sacrifice. You have Amos, chapter six, oh, excuse me, oh, yeah, excuse me, chapter five, verse twenty-four. I mean, before that, he talks about, I hate and despise your religious feasts. I cannot stand your assemblies. He's talking about, like, if you put it in contemporary English, you think about today. He's talking about people, like, if you're having a religious service, he doesn't care. He says, but let justice roll down like a river, righteousness like a never-flowing stream. He doesn't care about your sacrifice, all this pious behavior. He says, you know, justice, that's, that is my guide, and that is the God that I follow. And God would be on the side of the trans kids and LGBTQ kids. And that's, that's where I'm, I'm going to stay with God, on that side.
Todd Mathieu.
I'm a math teacher in Rockingham County, and something is just not adding up about the lack of parental notification in our county. First, let's be honest about what parents are concerned about. A child asking to be called a different name is going down the road, changing their gender. In RCPS, this very important decision by a student is supported by the schools, but concealed from parents. What right does a school have to hide such a momentous change from parents? It appears that the school board and superintendent don't trust parents, the majority of whom were educated in public schools such as ours. Does anyone find that ironic? Second, why would RCPS want to conceal this information from parents? Is it because you don't think it's a big deal for a child to change their gender? Well, it is. Or do you not trust parents to make decisions that are best for their children? They do. Or do you assume that most parents who are not supportive of their child changing their gender are going to abuse their child? They aren't. The fact is that growing up is a process in which parents guide their children the best they know how. And sometimes that involves difficult conversations and interactions. Keeping this a secret from parents short-circuits this natural process. Why do you think parents are not as good as school officials at trying to understand and deal with what their child is going through? Third, we've been hearing alarming statistics about how students go down the road of gender transitioning are way more susceptible to self-harm. As a side note, affirming something that could harm someone is not compassion. What doesn't make sense is why would you intentionally conceal this potential danger at the very time when a child is in the greatest need of their parent's involvement, love, and guidance? This has nothing to do with outing students and everything to do with simply informing the primary source of care, love, and responsibility in the child's life, their parents. Taking this one step further, have you considered the potential liability you are assuming by keeping secrets from parents? Imagine this likely scenario. The school system knows that a child is headed down a path which has risk factors for self-harm. The school system intentionally withholds that information from parents, and then the child harms herself. Have your lawyers considered this? Lastly, as a teacher, I am not comfortable keeping secrets from parents. Don't ask me to call up a student one name at school and then a different name in communicating with parents. It's not ethical, and I won't do it. School board members, don't cave to politically correct group-think woke voices who insist that you agree with them that the emperor's new outfit looks terrific. Wake up, people. He's naked.
I want to say thank you to all of those who have addressed the board this evening, and thank you for your courtesy to all of the speakers as they, as they spoke and expressed their views.
I did, and I'm so sorry. I'm sorry.
It's my first time. I don't really know.
It's been a long day for me, and I, yeah, I apologize.
That's okay. Hi, my name is Sarah Hurst, and I'm a parent of three children ages five, ten, and thirteen. I'm a former teacher of Rockingham County Public Schools. I actually just resigned this year after having spent fourteen years teaching in this county. So thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I am speaking tonight with the perspective of a parent and a teacher on Board Member Matt Cross's name notification proposal. Teachers care deeply about the heart of a child and what is best for them, but we are not, nor will we ever be, our students' parents. There are rights and responsibilities that go with parenting that we do not have as educators. The term in loco parentis, which is Latin for in place of the parent, is being taken too far these days. Schools have temporary authority to ensure that our children are respectful and safe while in your care, but we are still the parents. Even with in loco parentis in place, you still do not have the authority to withhold information about our children from us. As parents, we have sovereignty over our children, not you. You don't have to agree with our parenting style, but it isn't your job to interfere or to keep secrets from parents. There are a lot of assumptions being made about how parents will respond when a phone call like this is made. And somewhere along the line, some of you began to think that it was your job to protect children from their parents. First of all, you all already know this, but you have hired excellent teachers and counselors in Rockingham County. They know how to have these difficult conversations with parents that can cultivate relationships and not endanger children. It is irresponsible to base policy, or a lack of a policy, on a rare and worst-case scenario like the child could die. If you wanted to, you could work together on the wording of Mr. Cross's policy for those rare instances, but as a general rule, parents need to be informed. Second, parents make mistakes. We all say things we regret. We're probably going to get it wrong sometimes. The school should never presume that they need to protect children from their parents by withholding information just in case we screw it up. These situations are opportunities to help the child share with the parent. Schools have an opportunity to, in these situations, direct parents to outside resources if you choose. As a former teacher, I can assure you that this proposed policy will not place an undue burden on teachers, nor will it cause excessive paperwork, as some have worried that it would. As educators, it's not considered best practice to ever withhold information from parents. Period. It's not best practice. Members of the board do not vote on the policy based on assumptions about how a parent might respond. Vote to protect a parent's God-given privilege and right to parent and to be informed of what's going on with their child at all times. We may not agree with how someone else rears and parents their child, but the bottom line is, it's not the school's job to create barriers and a lack of transparency. Parental consent should be required for name changes, because the schools are not the parent. Thank you.
Again, Ms. Torres, I'm, I'm sorry for overpassing you. It was not intentional. I apologize. But again, I thank you all for being respectful of all of the speakers and the opinions that they have expressed to the board tonight. Next, we will move to highlights by board members, and I will begin with Mr. Folk. Thank you. Dr. McLoughlin.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Breeden. This evening, I have three highlights. The first of which is this book that's available on Amazon, and it was written by one of our teachers. It was written by Autumn, I never get this name right, Pequeno. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, and Autumn wrote this book, and it's called The Day the Farmers Quit. And I purchased it from Amazon, and we're just proud as, as can be that she went to Amazon and had this book printed, and it's available there. And I, I highly recommend it. Autumn is very supportive of Ag in the county. Isn't that correct, Ms. Lohr? Ms. Lohr? Yes, indeed. And I know she has sponsored many programs annually to bring parents in and to community members in to watch the children interact with the, with the farm animals and farmers. So, thank you, Autumn. My next one is, the week of July eleventh, there, there was an article in the DNR, and it was highlighting the National Drumming Workshop, sponsored by the World Music Drumming Corporation. And it was held at Peakview, and one of our teachers asked to bring this in. And ten of our teachers attended, and thirty, there are thirty-five altogether, and twenty-five were not from our county. And it was a wonderful opportunity for our teachers to learn more about drumming. And it was an opportunity to highlight and showcase our school division when the other teachers from other divisions came in. So it was wonderful, wonderful program. And lastly, at the end of the summer, on, at TA, there were fifty-six students who graduated in summer graduation. I think it was absolutely wonderful. Students from all four of our high schools were represented, and it was a very proud evening. The parents were so enthusiastic. The audience was enthusiastic, and the students were ecstatic to be graduating. So it was a great, great evening.
Thank you, Dr. McLoughlin. Ms. Lohr?
Thank you. I think I'm going to pass for just a minute, because my highlight is coming up very soon. And it looks like we have, I just want to say I'm a proud graduate of Turner Ashby High School. I let, I see a lot of familiar faces out here, so I'm looking forward to that. So I'm going to pass for now.
Mr. Cross.
I've got two tonight. Number one, Bob Scott is here tonight. He was my principal, and I want to highlight him and all the years he spent in Rockingham County and all the hours I spent in his office as a student. Something must have worked. I was sitting here tonight, and I, God worked in my life, Mr. Scott, and I turned out okay, I think. So thank you for all your patience as my principal and believing in me as a student. And I appreciate all the work you've done throughout the years in Rockingham County Public Schools. Thank you for being here tonight. I, my second highlight tonight won't, well, my second highlight tonight is, I want to just highlight all the custodians that we have within the county. That's all the hard work that they've been doing throughout the summertime and all the things I've been seeing posted on social media. And I'm just, the, the work they put into the schools is absolutely amazing. And your work does not go unnoticed. So you're probably not watching this tonight, but you're probably at home with your family, enjoying your evening. But as a school board member, I really appreciate all our staff that puts all the hard work in over the summertime to make our schools look as good as they do. And I appreciate all your hard work. So if you happen to see a custodian, please reach out to him and tell him thanks for all they do for our schools. So, Mr. Chairman, that's all I've got.
Thank you, sir. Dr. Schike?
One highlight, just this past weekend stuffed a bus at multiple locations across the county. Thanks to everyone in the community who came out to donate school supplies that go to students and families that have trouble, you know, paying for those school supplies. And it's always a big effort on part of the community to support the schools and to support those families. And so that those supplies are staying in the area. So they are divided up by free reduced lunch percentage among those different schools. And it was a privilege to be out at Timberville Walmart to help collect some supplies with staff and talk to community members for that time. While the custodians, as Mr. Cross had said, worked hard again this summer to make the schools really look amazing, as they do every year. And, you know, we've, we've said this all the time, you know, when people come to Rockingham to visit, when you look at our buildings and some of... to visit, when you look at our buildings, and some of, you know, the buildings certainly have aged quite a bit, but you walk into that building and it looks like a brand-new building, and that's really due to the work from our custodial staff, and it's amazing. That's what most people who visit immediately comment on, is how amazingly clean our buildings are, how well-taken care of they are when renovations are done. Of course, our schools look like brand-new schools inside, and custodians, just like everyone else, they take tremendous pride in their work. And I know the Facebook post was about the Spotswood Group, which is an incredible group, and it's the same in all our other schools. And so, while they were cleaning, families were taking vacations, and I would say one of the highlights on social media at least was the Facebook effort that Katie Lepierre put together, our community outreach coordinator, to have families send in pictures of all the things that the kids did over the summer, whether that was activities locally or travels that took them all over the world, and the same for staff. That was certainly also a highlight, to see what happens during the summer when the kids aren't there. And while the custodians cleaned and everyone else also traveled, administrators and teachers had a number of opportunities for learning, so just these last few days, I know a number of staff members were out at the bay again with Mr. Fitzgerald, so I always want to say thank you, you know, for making those opportunities available, number of other opportunities as well. And today, we just started administrative in services at JMU for our administrative staff. So, we're getting close. You know, just a couple of days after the next board meeting, it's going to finally be school again because it's not school until the kids are back. And so, everyone's still finalizing the preparations, getting bus routes ready, and yeah, looking forward to the kids being back. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank all of you for your highlights. You certainly have touched on some very, very worthy topics here. I just am excited because the people that I talk to, that I run into, that are employees of the system, are just excited about going back. Everybody seems to be in a good frame of mind and ready to buckle down and get some good work done and a good year underway. There's only one person that I've met who does not share that sentiment. And we just received word this week that my four-year-old grandson, Oakland, has been accepted in the four-year-old program, and he said, "Nope, not going." So, but everybody else seems to be pretty excited about that. Next, we will move into action items, and the first item is the naming of the Turner Ashby, Turner Ashby High School Gymnasium, and I'd like to call upon Principal Chris Knoll.
Good evening, Chairman Breeden, school board members, and Dr. Scheichel. My name is Chris Knoll, principal at Turner Ashby High School. Pursuant to Board Policy FFA, I come to you this evening on behalf of members of the community who have submitted letters in support of the renaming of the gymnasium at Turner Ashby High School for Mr. Larry S. Pence. I'm in possession of 16 letters requesting that the board consider this proposal. A number of individuals who submitted these letters are in attendance this evening, along with Mr. Pence, his wife Mandy, and members of his family. Larry Pence came to Turner Ashby in 1961 as the head boys' basketball coach. During his 18 years as coach, employing the motto "Excellence through athletics," his teams have had a record of 276 wins and 117 losses, and notched nine district championships, three regional championships, and the 1967-68 Group II State Championship. He also served as athletic director and coordinated the move to the new school in Bridgewater. Coach Pence retired from Rockingham County Schools in 1995. During his career spanning four decades, he was recognized as Coach of the Year, two-time Athletic Director of the Year for the Commonwealth of Virginia, and has been inducted to the Bridgewater College Hall of Fame and the Virginia High School League Hall of Fame. In the words of Coach Bobby Stevens, "Beyond his success on the court, Coach Pence truly believes and sets the example of the student athlete. Many of his former players went on to college and postgraduate degrees. His love of competition through sports and his willingness to work with young men and women has positively influenced many young people and has earned the respect and admiration of those who worked with him. Thank you to the board for considering this request from the Turner Ashby community."
Thank you, Mr. Knoll, and I'm prepared to read the resolution that was really prepared as a collaboration with some of the members of the community who came to Mr. Knoll. This process always begins with members of the community suggesting the naming of a facility or part of a facility to the principal, and then Mr. Knoll came to me. We worked through that draft again. There was additional input from even school board members, and we had it also worked on in our staff. So, thanks to Kim Tate for proofreading it as late as today, and so here would be the final version of this.
Dr. Scheichel, may I interrupt you? May I please have the honor of reading this resolution?
Absolutely.
I've got it right here in front of me. And just so everybody knows, so I grew up with Mandy and Larry as my 4-H leaders, and I owe a great deal of my public speaking abilities to these fine people. So, it is absolutely my honor to read this resolution tonight. Resolution: Naming the main gymnasium at Turner Ashby High School "The Larry S. Pence Gymnasium." Whereas, Larry S. Pence served as a teacher, coach, and athletic director for 35 years at Turner Ashby High School. And whereas, he coordinated the overall athletic programs and facilities to move to the new Turner Ashby High School in Bridgewater and has led the way for the athletic programs to grow in many areas during his tenure over the four decades at the school, including as the coach of the 1968 Boys' Basketball Group II State Championship team. And whereas, he consistently sought to meet and serve the needs of all students, staff, and athletes with whom he worked, and ensured that every child received an equal opportunity to succeed. In addition to teaching and coaching duties, he was an adult volunteer leader in the Creative Chefs 4-H Club and the Rockingham County 4-H, a volunteer at the Rockingham County Fair, assisting with various food booths and the junior homemaking department. And whereas, he was recognized with many honors and awards, including Coach of the Year and in 1978 and 1993 Athletic Director of the Year for the Commonwealth of Virginia, and was inducted into the Bridgewater College Hall of Fame and the Virginia High School League VHSL Hall of Fame. And whereas, his motto "Excellence through athletics" has influenced many student athletes and athletic programs at Turner Ashby High School. And whereas, he served as a role model by virtue of his strong moral code, his work ethic, his commitment to education, and his high standard of sportsmanship on and off the court, earning him the respect, affection, and gratitude from the students, athletes, parents, coaches, and staff members of Turner Ashby High School and its extended community. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Rockingham County School Board names the main gymnasium at Turner Ashby High School "The Larry S. Pence Gymnasium" in honor of Mr. Pence's exemplary contributions to Turner Ashby students, athletes, teachers, coaches, and the Dayton-Bridgewater community. Do I do the adopted part?
No, you don't. And I recommend approval of the resolution as you just heard.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Is there a motion for approval of the resolution as read by Ms. Lohr?
I so move.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. Any discussion? It's truly an honor to be here taking this vote tonight, and we can't wait to see when the recognition is in place. If there are, now, we have to have a roll call for a resolution? No? Okay. All those in favor of the resolution and the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I hear that is 5-0. Congratulations.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask for a five-minute recess so that we may congratulate Mr. Pence?
Absolutely. Would you like to say anything, Mr. Pence, before?
That's a good idea.
I am highly honored with this distinction. I'd like to thank you, the school board. I'd like to thank Tom Hoy, who headed up our committee, the people who supported me, the administration of Rockingham County and Turner Ashby, my fellow coaches, and most of all, the athletes who served under these 18 years of varsity basketball. I'd like to also thank my student managers, scorekeepers, those who were not the athletes but supported the program, and most of all, the parents of these youngsters. Again, it's a high honor, and I definitely appreciate it. Thank you.
At this time, per Ms. Lohr's request, I will declare the meeting in recess for five minutes.
Thank you.
Yep. Declare this meeting back into order. We are continuing on our action items, and board members, we do have need to approve the minutes from the previous meeting. You have received a copy of those, and I will entertain a motion if it be your desire for approval.
I move we accept the minutes as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That is unanimous. Next, we will move to bills and mileage. You have that in your packet as well, board members, and if it be your desire, we will entertain a motion for approval of payment.
I move that we approve the July 2022 bills as presented.
I was supposed to wait for you to recommend it, wasn't I?
I do recommend approval of the bills. It's okay.
I follow.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Lohr. That just shows you're not really in charge, Dr. Scheichel.
That's right.
Go with the flow. All right. Any discussion on bills and mileage?
Dr. Scheichel, have you found out whether, you know, how close we are to making that transparent to the public, being able to see that on the website?
I think they are being posted.
They are?
Yeah.
Can you tell us where that's at?
So, it's just like everything, if you go to board meetings, there's always public content, administrative content, executive content. Right now, you see them in executive content because they haven't been approved yet, so... But in the meeting record, these are then in public content, just like the resolution, for example, to name the gymnasium that we just had. Again, right now, that's in executive content, and then that goes up to public content. So, as people look through the agendas, when bills are adopted, once that adoption happens, then those go up into public content. So, they will be available.
Great. Is there a way we can make that simple on the page, a button where they are, something they could address, so that people have to kind of search through it, like this kind of, it's out there and they can see it?
I mean, every, yeah, I understand. I mean, every document that the board approves, just like personnel, for example, you know, whatever the documents are, there is on the main website, if you go to the board, you know, there are the meeting agendas, and again, every month, the bills are there. So, they are consistently in the same spot. And so, anytime you go to a meeting agenda, if bills are there and you click on bills, the document will be there. I think that's...
Okay. Doesn't news?
You just don't see them now. I don't know whether, yep, last meeting already.
Okay. Was that the first time they posted them? Cool. All right. Great. Awesome.
And again, that took a little bit of work just in terms of how the items are recorded. We had that conversation previously before they were posted publicly. You know, it wasn't always easy to identify what that was, and so, again, and there'll be some, you know, where that continues, but for the most part, we've had conversations then with accounts payable to make sure that when the description is put in, that it really explains, you know, what that is for. So, hopefully, that's helpful to the public, and yeah, not a problem.
Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none, all in favor of payment of the bills and mileage for July 2022, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That was unanimous as well. Budget amendment for fiscal year 2022, Ms. Mast. Thank you. It's easier said than not said than done.
Chairman Breeden, members of the board, and Dr. Scheichel, for your approval this evening as an amendment, it's actually for Massanotan Technical Center, our Fund 2205. It is to appropriate additional revenue that was received by MTC for fiscal year 22, the one that just ended June 30.
And I do recommend approval of the budget amendment for fiscal year 22 as presented by Ms. Mast.
Thank you, Dr. Scheichel. Is there a motion in support of superintendent's recommendation?
I move to follow the superintendent's recommendation to approve the budget amendment.
we're going to pay for them, I think. No, I'm just kidding. They have the money. It's set aside for that, yeah.
Okay. But like I said, just going and visiting the classrooms, it seemed like the students, the teachers enjoyed it, and also it challenged the students, so I'm glad to see us adopting this tonight.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay. Now, I have just, I've had a really long day. I apologize. I've been at the hospital with my mom since early this morning, but did we do the roll call vote on the resolution? I don't think we did. So let's, so let's get, I think I did a voice vote on it as opposed to a roll call, but let me get, let's do this one, and then we'll go back and pick that one up. If there are no questions or further questions, all those in favor of adoption of the English learners' textbook, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, that's 5-0, and back, thank you, Dr. Shiflett.
Thank you.
Back on the First American Commercial Bancorp lease, does anybody need any refresher on that before we, so we'll do a roll call on that.
Chair Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Falk? Vice Chair Lohr?
Aye.
Dr. McQuilkin? Mr. Cross?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we will move to policy revisions. Marcy Williams?
Good evening, Chairman Breeden, members of the board, and Dr. Schike. I'm here this evening to bring to you the fourteen policies that were before you in July for information, for your review and action on those policies this evening.
I do recommend approval of the policies as presented by Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Schike. Do I hear a motion in favor of support of the superintendent's recommendation?
I motion to follow superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 5-0. Thank you, that's 5-0, and back, thank you, Dr. Shiflett.
Thank you.
Back on the First American Commercial Bancorp lease, does anybody need any refresher on that before we, so we'll do a roll call on that.
Chair Breeden?
Aye.
Mr. Falk? Vice Chair Lohr?
Aye.
Dr. McQuilkin? Mr. Cross?
Aye.
Thank you. Next, we will move to policy revisions. Marcy Williams?
Good evening, Chairman Breeden, members of the board, and Dr. Schike. I'm here this evening to bring to you the fourteen policies that were before you in July for information, for your review and action on those policies this evening.
I do recommend approval of the policies as presented by Ms. Williams.
Thank you, Dr. Schike. Do I hear a motion in favor of support of the superintendent's recommendation?
I motion to follow superintendent's recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Cross. Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Falk. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that is 5-0. Thank you, Ms. Williams. And that will conclude our action items for this evening. We will move into information items. We have a textbook committee for fashion marketing. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Good evening, Chair Breeden, school board members, Dr. Schike. Tonight, for information, I present a list of potential textbook committee members for fashion marketing. The list includes marketing teachers from each of the attendance areas, a business owner who's involved in fashion marketing, a parent and a student. I'll ask for action on this committee at the next school board meeting. The book was last adopted, the one that's in current use, in 2006.
Are you saying that fashion has changed since 2006?
Just a little. Not my fashion, but maybe some.
Because you and I are still wearing the same stuff.
I know, I got my old time on today. That's it. Any questions?
Well, we can update our...
Well, once we get the committee, then the committee will choose some books to look at, and we're planning on looking at online and text versions. Most of them are both text versions and online versions, but yes, if you'd like a copy, we certainly can get you one of everything we look at.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Thank you.
Board members, there is a policy manual, annual announcement that you have for your information. The annual announcement says that the school board policy manual is posted on the Rockingham County Public Schools webpage, accessible to employees and the public. Printed copies are available as needed to citizens who do not have online access. Further changes in school board policy are presented at open school board meetings, predominantly as informational items to be approved at a later date. The school board welcomes input to the proposed revisions by school board members, administrators, teachers, parents, and other concerned citizens, and that is just an annual statement that's made each year regarding policy manual. Also, you will find in your packets a financial review for July of 22, and do you have anything to add to that, Ms. Mast?
We also have that, yeah, that's okay. So the financial review?
Right.
Is in your materials as usual, yep.
Yeah.
And the school board meeting schedule is also in your materials, just for review. Again, there'll be action on it at the next board meeting. The meeting schedule is very similar to this year. We make some adjustments based on when the retirement event is, so that that's not always at the same school, but other than that, you know, and again, there are some meetings that are changed to Tuesday, for example, you know, if Monday, for example, is a holiday that is observed, and so you can review that, and then we'll bring it again for action at the next meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Schike. Next, we will move to school board questions, and I will begin with Mr. Cross.
Yeah, my first one, this question on, Dr. Schike, was, I'd ask you about maybe some, I'm looking into possibly doing something with cell phones in the classroom, helping out with teachers and things like that, and just wanted to ask you, kind of, where are you at on that, your thoughts, and kind of the process of that?
Yeah, so over the summer, I had sent board members an article to read at their discretion, obviously, about research into the negative effects of cell phones on learning, so in the actual learning environment. It's really important to understand how cellphone applications are written, cellphone applications that rely on students, you know, to like something, so for example, a lot of the social media apps, they function, when you talk about brain chemistry, they're very similar to a drug addiction, so dopamine release, and so these clicks become something kids actually literally get addicted to. And while we can't put the social media piece back into the box, we certainly have some control over how much students have access to those during the day. Currently, this is not really an issue at elementary schools, we don't allow cell phones there. At the middle schools, the policy basically allows students to have their cell phones, and they can even carry them around or have them in their pocket, but they're not supposed to use them. Now, you can imagine, you know, students go to the restroom, or they just walk with them in the hallway, you know, who's going to check whether they're on their cellphone or not? And then at the high school, it is basically up to each teacher to determine whether the cellphone is needed for some instructional purpose, and that policy came about, you know, it's called bring your own device. So that came about years before we went into a one-to-one environment where students have access to a Chromebook at all times, and at the time, you know, when students conducted research that required online research, if the teacher couldn't get access, for example, to a mobile lab or to the, at the time, to a regular computer lab, then you had to really postpone that activity potentially, and so the board at the time then created that policy to allow teachers to say, you know what, if we need this for research right now, you can have that cellphone. But again, that's no longer the case because the Chromebooks are there. Now, times have also changed in terms of how much students communicate with those cell phones, for example, with their families, particularly in high school, when we're talking about athletics, many coaches, you know, if we find out in the middle of the day that something needs to be postponed, there may be a group text message, and so I think there is a good conversation to be had. For example, it's conceivable to say in middle school, even though, again, saying you can't have your phone with you at any time, or if it's in the bookbag, you know, it might be okay, so at the middle school, it's certainly possible to say, the phone, if your phone is with you, it can't be in your pocket, you can't carry it around, you can't use it during the school day. If you have it in your bookbag for some before and after-school communication, or on the bus, whatever it may be, then we may be okay with that. Again, that's a good conversation to be had. At the high schools, certainly, it makes it really difficult for this class-by-class permission, and so the feedback from administrators, the feedback from teachers, has been pretty much, cell phones are the biggest distraction to student learning, no question about it. And so, again, maybe a policy could be implemented that says, at the high school level, even though students can have them in between classes, and because, again, it's a different level of communication that during instructional time, no cell phones. It would include some other changes to policy in terms of, for example, requiring wired headphones for the Chromebook, because, again, as soon as you have the Bluetooth earpiece in, you know, you're connected to your phone, not really to the Chromebook likely. And so, again, it's a good conversation, but I will also say that it's important for us to get feedback from teachers and feedback from families, and so my recommendation would be to conduct a survey among families, among teachers, to see, you know, which of these variations families and teachers really prefer. I have to say, in teacher and parent advisory, both groups overwhelmingly supported any change that eliminates the use of the cellphone during instructional time, and again, at the middle school, just have it in your bookbag if you have it in school. But again, that's a small group, and so I think, again, this is something that affects families in ways, you know, that we don't always know, you know, in terms of communication. Certainly, there will also always be exceptions. For example, we have some students who are diabetic, right, who have a measurement device in their arm, and then the cellphone serves, you know, as their tool to get an alert, so again, we'll work through all that, and, but I believe, as teachers return and families are coming, you know, kids are coming back to school, I think it's the right time to ask families, and then at the board level, have that conversation around what potential changes may be appropriate. But I can tell you, teachers have told administrators, it's the number one reason that they're having, you know, problems with getting kids' attention, and it's, you know, I don't want to blame the kids, because when you live in that environment where that's how the apps are designed specifically to get you hooked, then we just, we have to be very, very careful.
Right. We try to get a survey out at the beginning of school year, or?
I would recommend that, because, again, if we do it, I mean, we're two weeks from the school year, so, you know, anytime between now, even at the beginning of the school year, we can open it up to see what the early feedback is, but I would also like to give, again, families that time, you know, that they really are thinking school and teachers, you know, are back in that environment, because some of it may involve, you know, conversations at the school level where teachers really want, once that survey is out, maybe they want to talk to other staff members, and so rather than asking them in the summer, when those conversations aren't necessarily there, I think it's a good time to say, you know, we hear the concerns, and, but we want to get more input from families and from teachers, because ultimately, that's what affects the most, right?
Right.
It certainly affects teachers and their ability to have classroom activities where students are focused, and that's a key piece of learning, and also to have some input from families, you know, what barriers they might see, or how they see the benefit of it.
Awesome, awesome. Board members, would you agree to, for him to do a survey that would be in favor of that? All right. Well, it looks like we're all in favor of doing a survey like that, to hear back from the teachers and parents, and I think it's a great idea. So thanks for, thank you that, thanks for sending that out. Anything we can do to help our teachers and classroom is big, so thank you. The last thing, I'm not, from the name, I changed policy, we're going to talk to council on, tonight, and look at my policy in which I presented, so it's not a lot that I have to say on that, other than I really appreciate a lot of the speakers that came out tonight and the public that addressed this, and because many of you had some great thoughts and ideas on this, and I appreciate you coming out and addressing the board. I was at Ma Pa, I don't know if you liked Ma Pa in District 3, but I was at Ma Pa just here last week having lunch, and there were two young mothers that were in the restaurant, and so I went up and introduced myself, and one of them had an infant that they were carrying, the other one had three kids under six, and I told them about my policy and what, how we operate now as a school board, and I asked them, two people that I don't know, don't know whether they, they didn't know me, and I asked them their thoughts on this as well, and they said, absolutely, we want to know if our child is dealing with something like this, and we want to be the ones in charge, whether they change their names or not, and these are two young parents. I talked to another parent today in my district, who's a mother at Cub Run, and I asked her, she didn't know who I was either, didn't know anything about the policy, and I asked her, I said, I told her what was going on and told her how we were operating right now as a division, and she was shocked that we wouldn't notify the parents and allow the parents to have that decision with their child. So as much as the media wants to report that I'm some mean ogre and some just, I'm the boogeyman out here, and this is, I'm such a terrible person, this is how the majority of our constituents in Rockingham County think and believe that we should have the parents' involvement, consent, and knowledge if their child is going to change their name, and I think... For example, we have some students who are diabetic, right, who have a measurement device in their arm, and then the cellphone serves, you know, as their tool to get an alert. So again, we'll work through all that. And but I believe as teachers return and families are coming, you know, kids are coming back to school, I think it's the right time to ask families and then at the board level, have that conversation around what potential changes may be appropriate. But I can tell you, teachers have told administrators, it's the number one reason that they're having, you know, problems with getting kids' attention. And it's, you know, I don't want to blame the kids, because when you live in that environment where that's how the apps are designed specifically to get you hooked, then we just, we have to be very, very careful.
All right. Great. Will we try to get a survey out at the beginning of the school year, or?
I would recommend that. Because again, if we do it, I mean, we're two weeks from the school year. So, you know, anytime between now, even at the beginning of the school year, we can open it up to see what the early feedback is. But I would also like to give, again, families that time, you know, that they really are thinking school and teachers, you know, are back in that environment. Because some of it may involve, you know, conversations at the school level where teachers really want, once that survey is out, maybe they want to talk to other staff members. And so rather than asking them in the summer, when those conversations aren't necessarily there, I think it's a good time to say, you know, we hear the concerns, and but we want to get more input from families and from teachers, because ultimately, that's what affects the most, right?
Right.
It certainly affects teachers and their ability to have classroom activities where students are focused, and that's a key piece of learning, and also to have some input from families, you know, what barriers they might see or how they see the benefit of it.
Awesome, awesome. Board members, would you agree to, for him to do a survey that would be in favor of that? All right. Well, it looks like we're all in favor of doing a survey like that, to hear back from the teachers and parents. And I think it's a great idea. So thanks for, thank you that, thanks for sending that out. Anything we can do to help our teachers in the classroom is big, so thank you. I'm, the last thing, I'm not, from the name, I changed policy, we're going to talk to council on tonight and look at my policy in which I presented. So it's not a lot that I have to say on that, other than I really appreciate a lot of the speakers that came out tonight in the public that addressed this, and because many of you had some great thoughts and ideas on this, and I appreciate you coming out and addressing the board. I was at Ma-Pai, I don't know if you liked Ma-Pai in District Three, but I was at Ma-Pai just here last week having lunch, and there were two young mothers that were in the restaurant. And so I went up and introduced myself, and I, one of them had an infant that they were carrying, the other one had three kids under six. And I told them about my policy and what, how we operate now as a school board. And I asked them, two people that I don't know, don't know whether they, they didn't know me, and I asked them their thoughts on this as well. And they said, absolutely, we want to know if our child is dealing with something like this, and we want to be the ones in charge, whether they change their names or not. And these are two young parents. I talked to another parent today in my district, who's a mother at Cub Run. And I asked her, she didn't know who I was either, didn't know anything about the policy. And I asked her, I said, I told her what was going on and told her how we were operating right now as, as a division. And she was shocked that we wouldn't notify the parents and allow the parents to have that decision with their child. So I'm, as much as the media wants to report that I'm some mean ogre and some just, I'm the boogeyman out here, and this is, I'm such a terrible person, this is how the majority of our constituents in Rockham County think and believe that we should have the parents' involvement, consent, and knowledge if their child is going to change their name. And I think it would behoove us as school board members to listen to our constituents and do what's right on this. And whatever needs, whatever language in the, my policy needs to be changed, I don't mind doing that, as long as the core of that policy says that, hey, that we're going to, that we're, as a division, we're going to notify parents, we're going to let them know, and then we're going to ask their consent, whether they're okay with changing their child's name. And so whatever I have to do to do that, to satisfy you as a board, I'm willing to work with you as school board members to do that. But that is the, that's the meat in the policy that we, that needs to be addressed. And it's pretty vague right now, the policy that we have, and we need to narrow this down. And parents aren't going to trust us as a school division until we begin to include them on these decisions. So if we're saying as a board, we're going to hide this information from parents, how do you expect to earn back the public's trust at a low time low right now in our nation, and especially here as well? How do we expect to gain back their trust that we have their best interests at mind when they send their children to school? And so I think a vote against my policy as we look at it and change whatever needs to be changed, as in whatever will satisfy you in the fact that the meat of it says that we will notify parents, and also they would have to give consent to any name change that we would call their child by at school. I think we're hiding information from parents, and I think it was our math teacher here, I'm sorry, your name again? Matt, Mr. Matthews, I apologize, yes. The Mr. Matthews, the math teacher. I think he made a great point tonight was, what kind of responsibility, this is what I'm going to ask council tonight, is what kind of responsibility do we have, liability, I think it was you that brought this up, what kind of liability do we have on us not to report these issues that we see with children that puts them at a higher rate of suicide? I think the data shows they're at a 5.5 increase rate for suicide. And so we're going to hide information. As a school resource officer, we've notified parents and worked with administrators when children were depressed, when they were cutting themselves, when they were dealing with any suicidal thoughts, we TBO'd them, we contacted parents. And why would this change in not notifying them? So if we're going to gain back the trust of the community, we really need to put our parents first. And I hope that at least two of you agree with me of that. And I don't think it's too much paperwork, Ms. Lord, to do this. This is a very simple process, and I appreciate you bringing that up tonight, Ms. Hurst, that it's not too much paperwork to do. It's something that we owe to the parents that we should do to gain their trust. So I look forward to talking with the council tonight. And lastly, I apologize to Mr. Nicholson for, as a board member, I've had many heated conversations with people that don't like me, that call me a racist, a homophobe, a bigot, all kinds, they've gone on my church website and said all kinds of evil things about me. And I've never been called a racist or a bigot till I began doing this. And I've never cussed anyone and said something that, like that to someone. So as a board member, I apologize to another board member, and I recognize that as you as a parent, no matter that you agree with me on a lot of issues, that's not the point. I think the point is, is that as leaders in our county, as elected officials, we shouldn't talk like that to anyone, whether we disagree with them or not. And it's hard to do sometimes, I'm not going to say it's not, Mr. Folk. But I think it's best that we rise above and show the community, especially our children, our students, that we can, that's the thing, we can, we can agree to disagree. And that's the generation we're living in right now. We can't talk with people without them hating us and walk away. And that's why I said at the last board meeting, and I'll end with this, was that Mr. Miller, Jimmy Miller, at East Rockham, a counselor out there, man, we don't, there's hardly anything, if you're listening, Jimmy, there's hardly anything we agree on. And we've talked to the issues on abortion, we've talked on issues of all kinds of things. But I think we can say we can both walk away, and he may disagree with me now, maybe he thinks I'm the devil too, but I don't think he does. But we have both walked away, and we have said, you know what, we disagree on almost every single thing you can think about, but you know what, Mr. Miller's a good guy. And that's what we're missing in today's society, is that we can disagree with one another, yet walk away and not think each other is the devil and be mean towards one another. So for that, Mr. Nichols, I apologize. And I can't get the whole board to apologize, I haven't asked them, but I will say, for me as a board member, I apologize that you were talked to that way, so. And that's all I got, thanks.
I don't have any questions at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Dr. McQuilkin?
No questions this evening.
Mr. Rock? Thank you. Dr. Shikele?
I just want to briefly, and Mr. Cross knows this, right? So it's really important, because Mr. Matthew brought this up, you know, what he is required to do and what his concerns are. It's really important to understand that the, when you asked previously what policy we have in place, and I said, we don't have a policy in place, right? So that's also important to state, there is no policy in place currently. So when I responded by saying we wouldn't call, it means we don't have a responsibility to call. And I think that's where your policy comes in, you want that responsibility to be there if a student says, I want to be called by a different name. Currently, if a teacher decides to make that call, there's no sanction, there's no prohibition against calling, right? I think that's also important for the public to understand. So at this point, we don't have a policy at all. So if teach, it's to the, at the teacher's discretion, you know, whether they work with counseling or whatever it may be. And so your policy comes in in terms of saying the call has to happen. And so I just want to make that clear, right? So it's not currently that we have a policy that says, you may not talk to the parent about it. We also don't have that, right? So we simply don't have a policy in place right now. And I know you know this, but I think that's more important for the public to understand.
Yeah.
Because that's not how, of course, in social media, that's not how it plays out.
Right.
And you and I have talked about this, but I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, and I just wanted that there be a requirement for the school to be able to contact the parents, that they should be in the know. And also, teachers, you have a constitutional right where you don't have to go along with that as well. Like you said tonight, you don't have to go along with it, whether you have knowledge and you know that that situation going on, you don't have to, you can't be forced by the school division or by the government to go against any convictions that you may have. So that's important for us to know, for teachers to know as well. So thank you, Mr. Shikele.
Okay. I once heard a comedian say, I have the right to remain silent but not the ability. And I was hoping to remain silent during this part. But I have to say that it is reckless and perhaps even dangerous to talk about an employee by name and their political views, because they could possibly, it could possibly be retribution from the community. So I'm talking about the counselor that you referenced just a few moments ago, and that you didn't agree with them on anything. It's my time now, sir. It's my time, you've had yours.
That's fine, but if you're going to criticize me, we can contact him because he's never reached out to me and said anything differently.
He's not me either, but I'm saying that it's a dangerous and irresponsible thing to do.
It's your opinion.
To call out an employee there. Now, it's also inexcusable, in my view, to even inch up to the toe mark of suggesting that chaperoning a field trip to Hershey Park equates to being with someone's dying mother. So I do not apologize, Mr. Nicholson, and you should be ashamed of yourself because you, even tonight, disrespect Dr. Shikele by simply referring to him as Shikele, as Shikele. Yeah. Well, generalizations sometimes cause things to happen too. So the other thing that I would say, and I'll stop there, yeah, good night, good night. Well, you can't hang a man for telling the truth.
That's pretty disrespectful of you, Mr. Chairman.
How's that?
Pretty disrespectful.
How's that? Yeah, right, thank you. I will, I will stop, and I will leave a set of, with a quote that I read that was attributed to Mark Twain, when he said that no one learns anything when they're talking. So we'll leave it at that, and we do have reason to enter into closed meeting, and I will entertain a motion in that regard.
I move that the board enter a closed meeting to discuss and consider the following pursuant to provisions of Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711. A1, personnel, specific public officers, appointees, or employees for the purpose of considering such individuals' assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, salary, or resignation. A2, one or more particular students specifically related to discipline and requests regarding compulsory school attendance based on religious beliefs that would involve disclosure of information contained in a schulastic record containing a student. And A8, consultation with legal counsel employed by or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Thank you, Ms. Lord, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. McQuilkin. All in favor of entering into closed meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Can I have a roll call on that? I didn't hear all the votes. Mr. Folk? Dr. McQuilkin? Ms. Lord?
Aye.
Mr. Cross? Okay, I don't, I don't know what that means. I guess that's an abstention. So, all right, four, four, yeah, I'm in favor. Four in favor, one abstention. We are now in closed session. Thank you all for being here tonight. Please be careful on your drive home, and have a blessed evening.